Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, August the 10th of 2021, and we are here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Congress. And we're calling our meeting to order. We want to start with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Pastor Pulliam from Turning Point Christian Church. Pastor, come on up. So good to see you this morning.
Good morning. I found it an honor and a privilege to be here today.
Glad to see you.
I give honor to Chairman Osnes, but Sherri Jackson, Ms. Washington, and Dr. Darin Williams, and all of you that are here. I thank God for the privilege again to be able to bring invocation to you. Lord, I'm just so thankful and so grateful for all of your multiplicity of blessings in my life, as well as those that are here. And Lord, I ask today, the Creator of all the universe, to stretch out Your mighty hand upon this commission board. And Lord God, we ask You right now to intervene against the powers of darkness that tries to interrupt their decision-making. Lord, help them right now to make righteous decisions for this Rockdale County. Oh, we ask You right now to bless, Lord God, Rockdale County and everyone that's in Rockdale County. They need Your blessings today. They need Your mercy. They need Your grace today. And Lord, so does this great commission board. They need Your mercy and they need Your grace. And Lord, we asking You right now to stretch out Your hand again upon their families. Bless them as well. Lord, keep all manner of sickness and diseases from them in the name of Jesus. Lord, send Your angels to be about and around them and protect them from all hurt, harm, and danger. And Lord, we just so grateful and so thankful for them right now. And Lord, we ask You to continue, Lord God, to send Your mercy upon them as they make decisions again for this county. Lord, keep them safe, Lord, and all the COVID, keep COVID away from them in the name of Jesus. And Lord God, we ask You to remember, Lord, the first responders, all of the policemen, all of the firemen, all of those, Lord God, that are making decisions, Lord God, and standing up for this county, Lord, in the name of Jesus. And Lord, we just thank You for all things in Christ Jesus' name. We declare and we decree these things in Your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioners, first, let me say thank you to Pastor Pulliam. Thank you so much, Pastor, for leading us in invocation this morning. We certainly do appreciate all the fine work that she and her congregation does throughout Rockdale County with our local residents. I've said it multiple times that government alone cannot service the people. We have a very robust relationship with our local clergy, and we appreciate that and appreciate them and all of what they do. So thank you again to Pastor Pulliam and Turning Point Christian Church there just off of West Avenue who worked tirelessly behind the scenes doing things to help service all of our residents here in Rockdale County. As we're in a little bit of a transition, Commissioners, I think it's now time for special recognition and presentations, and I will follow the lead of Commissioner Washington.
Well, I kind of like the way we did it the last time when we were social distance. So I would like to present this proclamation to, well, it's whereas Muzad Mutasar Ahmad landed in the United States in January of 2001 and is celebrating 2021 as his 20th year in America, and as where, and whereas Mr. Ahmad established his first business, Alpha Petroleum Incorporated, on June 23rd, 2003, to operate a gas station and convenience store business. And in 2005, he started to invest in real estate by establishing Omega Builders LLC, which is the building company for most of his business endeavors. And whereas Mr. Ahmad is an active member of the, I'll say Muslim community, which was founded on March 23rd, 1889, and is currently headed by His Holiness Hadrat Mazharah Masour Ahmad, and he is recognized by several elite organizations and individuals not only for his many hours of service to the community, but for his philanthropy as well. And whereas Mr. Ahmad's accolades include the Rockdale County Citizen of the Year Award and the Conyers Rockdale Chamber of Commerce Community Service Award, he has served the Rockdale County community by serving on several boards, including the Walk of Heroes, the Boys and Girls Club, the Honor Flight of Conyers, and we share in the excitement of Mr. Ahmad's volunteerism and extend well wishes to him as he celebrates in his company of family and close friends. Now, therefore, be it resolved that August 10th, 2021, be proclaimed in Rockdale County as Mudassir Ahmad Recognition Day. And I would like to present this to Mr. Ahmad. You know, 21, 20 years here in the United States, and he's done so much for the community. And a lot of times, we, those of us who are born here, we take citizenship for granted. And Mr. Ahmad has come here and shown us what it is to be a model citizen, active in the community, cares deeply for his friends and family, and I'm just so proud to be able to present this and recognize your 20 years here in the United States. Thank you so much for all that you do. Did you want to say a couple words? Did you want to say a couple words?
Can I take it off for a second? Thank you. I really appreciate this honor, what you have blessed upon me. 20 years ago, this journey started through Baltimore, Maryland, when I landed over there. And June 2003, like it says, I came to Rockdale County, almost a homeless, hungry, somebody who had no relationship in this community. And I'm very thankful to the people of Rockdale who made me what I am today. It sounds like, you know, being with Rotary Club, being with Quoners Club, getting those awards, a big thing, but it is not possible without the help of this community. So I really appreciate Ms. Washington to recognize Ms. Williams, you know, to sign on this document, to make it a legal document. And it's not about Ahmad anywhere. You know, whatever I have done for the community, this is the thankfulness, what I have received from the people of this county, I'm thankful to them because without their help, I can't reach nowhere. And I once again appreciate all of you, and I'll keep doing what I'm doing for myself, my family, and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was hoping you'd bring those sweet children with you.
Is school do that?
I know.
All right. Okay. All right, Commissioners, we'll move on with our program at this time, our agenda. And Director Relig is calling for the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item five is the approval of the minutes from July 27th, 2021, and August 3rd of 2021. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Unfinished business, Director Relig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 2021-383 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 18 of the Rockdale County Code of Ordinances as amended, so as to amend certain provisions relating to the regulation of animals, to repeal conflicting provisions, to provide for an effective date, and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading this morning.
I move to approve the second read and adopt this ordinance.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, the consent agenda. Commissioners, your pleasure, please.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed below.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions concerning the items on the consent agenda this morning? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us now to the regular agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item 410 is a future land use case 2021-05, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended, so as to re-designate property located at 1774 and 1806 Flatsholes Road Southeast from the low-density residential agricultural to the high-density residential future land use category, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second read and to adopt the ordinance.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 411.
This is rezoning case 2021-07, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 1774 and 1806 Flatsholes Road Southeast from R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the RM Residential Multi-Family Zoning District, to impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 412, please.
This is special use permit case 2021-01, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Rockdale County as amended to authorize a special use permit for a de-watering facility at 5180 Highway 20 Northwest Loganville, Georgia 30052, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second read and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 413 is rezoning case 2021-08, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 2200 Pluckett Road Northwest from the M1/C Limited Industrial with Conditions of Approval and M2-C General Industrial with Conditions of Approval zoning districts to the M2 General Industrial Zoning District, to impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 414 is rezoning case 2021-09, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 0 Leicester Road Northwest from M1/C the Limited Industrial with Conditions of Approval zoning district to the M2 General Industrial Zoning District, to impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 415 is future land use case 2021-06, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended, so as to re-designate property located at 1101 Johnson Road Southwest from the commercial and high-density residential future land use categories to the high-density residential future land use category, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 416, please.
This is rezoning case 2021-10, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 1101 Johnson Road Southwest from the C2 General Commercial Zoning District to the RM Residential Multi-Family Zoning District, to impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second read and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 417, please.
So, Mr. Chairman and Board, if it pleases the Board, we'd like to take item 417 and 418 together, and once I've read the second readings, then we'll ask for a motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item 417 is rezoning case 2021-11, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 1900 Leicester Road Northwest from R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the M1 Limited Industrial Zoning District, to impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading. And we have item 418, a future land use case number 2021-07, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended, so as to re-designate property located at 1900 Leicester Road Northwest from the medium-density residential future land use category to the light industrial future land use category, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is also submitted for a second reading.
Based upon the inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan, I move to deny both of these ordinances as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Any comments? All in favor of denying this second, this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. This covers both 417 and 418.
Yes.
Let the record reflect, we're now moving on in the middle of this transition. We're moving on to item number 419.
Item 419 is future land use case 2021-08, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended, so as to re-designate property located at 4711 Highway 20 Southeast and 905 and 0 Bell Road Southeast from the medium-density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 420 is rezoning case 2021-12, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 4711 Highway 20 Southeast and 905 and 0 Bell Road Southeast from the AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to the C1 Local Commercial Zoning District, to impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Okay, we're getting there. We're almost there, okay? Item 421 is rezoning case 2021-13, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 2720 Salem Road Southeast from the MXD/C Mixed Use Development with Conditions zoning district to the MXD Mixed Use Development Without Conditions zoning district, to impose conditions upon the property to repeal, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. 422.
This is a text amendment request case number 2021-15, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 218-1 permitted use table of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding ice cream parlors, snacks, and non-alcoholic beverage bars and retail bakeries. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions?
Oh, no, but I would just have to say, you know, when we're talking about ice cream parlors and retail bakeries, we're in a good place.
You definitely second that.
We're in a good place.
You said it's not alcoholic beverage.
And non-alcoholic beverages, yeah, that's up my alley right there.
Any additional comments?
No.
No comment over there.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on. Item 423 is text amendment request case 2021-16, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 214-5, one principal use authorized per lot of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 424, please.
This is a text amendment request case number 2021-17, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 218-1 permitted use table of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding rental and leasing of equipment and goods, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 425.
This is text amendment request case 2021-18, an ordinance to amend the text of Section 202-6, relationship to comprehensive plan of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 426 is rezoning case 2021-14, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 2397 Iris Drive Southeast from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the M1 Limited Industrial Zoning District, to impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 429, please.
These are volunteer appointments with the Department of Family and Children's Services Board, Gail Jenkins for a reappointment, and Dr. John Young for a new appointment. These are five-year terms.
I move to approve these appointments as presented.
I second the motion. It has been, oh, it's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 409.
So, Mr. Chairman and Board, item 409 is a transmittal resolution, and at this moment, we will open the floor for public comment relative to this item, and I will read it out, and then we'll open up for if there's any comment.
Very good.
This is the transmittal resolution and the public hearing and capital improvements element 2021 annual update. This is for the CIE program. You have the information that is in your packet and has been published upon the website. And if there are anyone who wants to comment on it at this time, we'll open the floor.
Seeing none coming forward, I think we're in a good space here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if the Board would consider voting on this resolution.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve this transmittal resolution as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I think we have one person signed up for public comment. If anyone else has any red cards or anyone else requires to speak this morning. And as we're waiting, I'll go ahead and read the disclaimer, Mr. Chairman. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Okay. Thank you, Executive Director. We will now call up Mr. George Kellecheck. Coming up, Mr. Kellecheck.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners, citizens.
George Kellecheck.
Few items regarding the Big Haynes/Little Haynes watershed. Y'all approved a de-watering project. Notification was sent, actually, on the 15th day, which would meet the current ordinance. Just a few other items. U.S. Geological Survey completed engineering studies in 2019, and there was 19 feet of silt on the northern end of the Randy Portner reservoir. Calculations today show 25 feet of silt. By 2040, if we do not enter back into a memorandum of agreement, which is now officially out of service, we will have, we will not have any protection from Gwinnett County, Walton County, and Rockdale County to preserve our drinking water. And so by 2040, if this goes unchecked, we will have no drinking water in Randy Portner reservoir. I strongly suggest, with our help from the Georgia Soil Water Conservation District, other legislative members, EPD and EPA, create a renewal of the memorandum agreement between Gwinnett, Walton, and Rockdale County and the City of Conyers. The, again, if it goes left unchecked, dredging is one issue, but with continued silting into the reservoir from the Big and Little Haynes watershed, it will go unchecked. So this is larger than just the county and the city. There's a lot of partners that are going to have to get re-involved in this. We will have an extensive comprehensive presentation on 8/27 of this month at 8:30 at the UGA County Extension Service Building located at 1261 Commercial Drive. And we will be presenting, from agency officials and citizens, a comprehensive plan to attack this imminent danger that we're faced with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellecheck, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens here in Rockdale County. Okay, that completes our public comment. We're moving right along. And Commissioners, we are doing very well. I'm starting with Commissioner Washington.
Good morning. You are doing, I'm so proud of you. This is two weeks in a row. I don't know how to act, but I'm going to persevere through. Very first thing is, I am hosting my first tennis tournament. It will be August the 20th at the Tennis Center. It is for a very worthy cause. There is a group called, can't remember the name. I can tell you what they do. They, like the... the name. I can tell you what they do. They, like the dental, it's Kids Dock on Wheels. They provide medical services for children, like the dentist goes around to schools. They do the same thing. So, they just started in Rockdale County, and they are, I think they, they're starting this school year. So, we're hosting a fundraiser for them. So, all of the people in Rockdale County that play tennis, the registration is open for the tennis tournament. It is next week, next Friday, and we are still looking for tennis players. I think the tournament starts at like nine o'clock in the morning. Registration is still open, and I would love to have all of these, especially all of our tennis friends that play at Pine Log and at the Tennis Center, but all over Rockdale County to join us in this very, very worthy cause. My only second comment is, of course, COVID is still surging. We are still doing a lot, experiencing a lot of the side effects and adverse effects of COVID in the county, county government. And so, you know, I can't reiterate enough, wash your hands, social distance. You see that we're social distanced even here on the day, so I think we're still a lot further apart than we are normally. Face masks almost are essential, and not just for you. Now, the children are starting to carry, are known carriers of COVID. And so, we have to protect those little lungs as much as we can because, you know, if it gets any worse and these children start experiencing the symptoms that these adults are, I can't imagine what it would do to those little bitty lungs. So, let's be mindful of the fact that it's going to take all of us to combat this disease. We're all in it together, and everybody should do their part. That's all I have to say today.
All right. Commissioner Williams.
So, let me just pick up on that with the COVID. You know, as you're following the news, you're seeing younger and younger people, including a five-year-old in North Georgia who passed away, a healthy five-year-old who had no underlying conditions, who passed away from COVID. This is, you know, and the news last night compared the death rate among youth for the flu versus that of COVID, and at this point, COVID is about twice as much. It just, we just can't, can't emphasize enough how important it is to continue to social distance, to wear your mask. We thought we were, had seen the worst, and, you know, and I felt some relief for a few weeks, and then it's all come, you know, hitting back, even for those who are vaccinated. But I will say that people who are vaccinated are getting COVID, but ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of those who are dying are unvaccinated. So, that vaccination protects you from the serious side effects of COVID. But again, even as a vaccinated person, you know, I want to be careful that I don't get it because my grandchildren, some of them are too young to get a vaccination, and I don't want to spread it to them. So, we've got to keep that uppermost in our minds. And speaking of that, this Saturday, Congressman Johnson and I are supporting Helping Hands Outreach Clinic in their Healthy by Choice event that will be held at Wheeler Park, and hopefully, we're going to see a flyer of that up on the, there we go. It's from ten to three P.M. There'll be free barbecue, activities for the children. They're also collecting and donating school supplies and some other prizes. The following services will be offered for free: COVID-19 vaccines, cholesterol and blood pressure screenings, mental health screenings, and free physicals. So, and you can see, I don't know if you can see down there at the bottom either, but partners include Walgreens, Interfaith Youth, something with a C. I can't read what it says. And then St. Paul Church and the Helping Hands Outreach Clinic. So, it's been well organized. It's been months in the planning, and Congressman Johnson and I are super excited to be able to participate and support this event that will help keep our community healthy. And that's a really big deal in this day and age. The other event that I'm sponsoring will be held next Monday, and that is our nonprofit appreciation brunch. We were not able to have it last year, so this is really the fourth year, the fourth year, but the third event. And I'm really excited about the two nonprofits that we're highlighting, but we'll be, we'll be recognizing all of the nonprofit associations that are attendance because, like you said earlier, we, the government can't do it all, and these people work hard. They've worked hard through COVID, and they have, they have really, they really contribute to the fabric of our community and to the well-being of our community. I will say that we are going to require masks. It will be held out at Cosley Mill Park from ten thirty to twelve thirty. We are requiring masks. We will be social distancing. I had hoped that that wouldn't be an issue by the time we got to middle of August, but it is. So, we will take all the precautions that we need to take. But I'm really excited about it again. Glad that we could get together again this year, and those are my comments.
All right, very good. Okay, so, I want to, before I get into my brief comments, I do want to ask Director Morgan from the Emergency Management Agency to come on up. I had an opportunity to attend the twelfth annual pastors' table and get a direct update from Dr. Orona, as well as additional information that's coming out of EMA. Good morning, Director.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a quick update to reiterate everything that's already been said, just to give you some stats. Rockdale County is above thirteen percent positivity rate. Two months ago, we were three.
Oh, wow.
Hospital, like in most hospitals in the metro area, are operating at or near capacity. It fluctuates daily. We are at a case rate that we have not seen since February or March. So, everyone, when you hear or say, "social distance, wash your hands, wear a mask, get vaccinated," serious business. We need to kill this because you have to remember, people complain about stuff changing in mask, not mask. Delta didn't exist four months ago. So, essentially, this is a new type of, so it acts differently. It is more susceptible to infection. So, we need to change our methodology and our protocol and our actions and behaviors to try to get this. So, it's important, even testing, which, if you remember, a year ago, you couldn't get a test appointment. Then, all of a sudden, nobody wanted to get tested. We were, thought we were home free. Now, testing has become more of an issue. GNR and EMA are working to get more testing sites up here to make it more advantageous or even easier to get it. You can still get tested at most doctor's offices and healthcare pharmacies. You can get vaccines anywhere. So, if you're hearing my voice, if you're not vaccinated, please consider it and go get it done. It's easy, it's fast, and we still need to work on this. Any other questions from each Chairman, Commissioners?
No, I think that, Director, that sums it up.
Yes.
Both the Commissioners and I, as you've already heard, echo the same sentiments in terms of the importance of this. We are very much still in a pandemic, and the whole point about practicing, social distancing, washing hands, the same thing that we've been saying, folks have really let their head down, and to some degree, they've completely let their guard down, and it's causing problems. So, we're going to keep you on the front line of giving us updates as to what's going on, and just keep up the good work, and we just hope that people are not only paying attention, but listening and adhering to these protocols and what we need to do to stay safe.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, at this time, I'm going to ask Director Gumm, his team have put together a very educational short video about the basic protocols and how things work in the county, coming out of the county government, as relate to the various different elected officials and constitutional officers. Director Gumm?
That's exactly right. Chairman, good morning. Commissioners, good morning. Yes, a lot of times, they have questions, citizens, about Rockdale County and how it functions and how it operates. Had an example earlier this week. A lot of folks, unfortunately, were calling the county, asking about bus transportation to and from school. So, we wanted to make this short video to let people know who's responsible for what. We can roll video. Thank you.
Rockdale County is governed by the Board of Commissioners, which includes the chairman, as well as the post one and post two Commissioners. While the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners governs various departments such as Rockdale Water Resources, General Services, and Transportation, the county does not have the final say when it comes to decisions made by the courts or the sheriff's office, tax commissioner's office, or the coroner. While these entities are strong partners and rely on the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners for funding, they are also independent bodies elected by the people. For example, the courts are under the full direction of each elected judge. The DA's office is under the full control of the elected district attorney. The sheriff's office, probate courts, tax commissioner, and coroner are all set up the same way. The Board of Commissioners do not control the elected officials for the decisions or messages that come from their offices. Each elected official has the role of CEO of their respective elected office. If you have any issues concerning Rockdale County and its departments, you may find each department's contact info by going to rockdalecountyga.gov, or you may text the chairman directly at seven seven zero six two four nine four four six. We hope this assists our citizens.
So, I want to say thank you again to our Public Relations Department, and I also want to make clear that we are certainly strong, very strong partners with all of the elected officials and constitutional officers that make up this great county, Rockdale County. I think we will have an ongoing level of education as we continue to educate the general public about who's on first and who's responsible for what. At the end of the day, the goal is to make sure that we go from good to great and that Rockdale remains the absolute best county in the state of Georgia. So, we work together, communication, collaboration, and the key word is partnership. So, thank you, Director Gumm, for that. Also, Commissioners, I want to take a moment and say thank you to all of our Rockdale County employees. Department of Talent Management has done a fantastic job reminding everybody of the protocols, COVID protocols, and what to do and what not to do, so that we will not have to shut the county down, and we're asking all of our employees in various departments and divisions to please, ma'am, please, sir, respect your coworkers, follow the protocols, let's keep the operations up and running. As relate to parks and recreation, we are continuing, we're getting a lot of calls about this, so we are continuing to monitor what's happening. And I just, I really describe this Delta variant, this whole backlash, whatever title you want to put, it's just got us in limbo. You know, one moment, they're telling us one thing, the next moment, they're telling us something else. We're trying to move forward economic development and moving forward with the county, parks and recreation and activities. There's a group of citizens who have been vaccinated. They are ready to get out and enjoy life. They're merchants and local businesses who have been vaccinated, and they want business to flourish and flow inside their shops and their restaurants. And these people get vaccinated. So, one thing does, there's a cause and an effect. One thing does impact the other. So, we're encouraging people, if you want us to gather for the Christmas parade this year at Old Town Conyers, if you want to be a part of the tree lighting and all the other festive activities, then we're asking that you do what needs to happen. I also want to make mention of the big upcoming holiday, Labor Day. That's going to be a telltale sign. It's going to tell us all because we've got Labor Day, then we have Thanksgiving, then we have Christmas. With those gatherings, last year, we were not able to do all of those things. If you want to do that, we're asking that the decisions that you make right now, number one, get vaccinated because we need to move our county and our community forward, and we ask that you respect the lives of other people so that business, activity, and fellowship can flourish here in Rockdale County. But I really want to say thank you to our employee workforce because that's where the rubber meets the road. They're coming in and out of these office buildings. They're out in the field, working among each other. We want to make sure that they are following the COVID protocol and the CDC guidelines, and hats off to Talent Management, Director Holmes and her team for really keeping this present, ever-present in the face of our employees. We've asked Commissioners that each department director reiterate, almost on a day-to-day basis, the importance of following these guidelines so that we can keep Rockdale County rocking and rolling. So, I want to make mention of that because, you know, we're up here saying the same thing, but we got to have people actually carrying it out and doing what needs to be done to keep the county moving forward.
So, can I add to that?
Please.
Just like Director Morgan, I guess he's gone, mentioned that four months ago, the Delta variant did not exist, and now it's, I don't know, ninety percent or something of all of the cases. There are some new variants also, and the longer it takes for everybody to get vaccinated, the more time it gives for these, these different variants to mutate and change. And one of them that I've read about says that it, one of the newest variants is resistant to the vaccines. So, you know, if we don't do what needs to be done, this could last for years at the rate we're going. We've got to get people vaccinated and help them to understand why that's important and to alleviate their concerns. And the newest thing I saw said that pediatric associations are encouraging pregnant women to get vaccinated.
Wow.
And there has been some concern about that, but I think those concerns are being alleviated as more time goes on and we're able to see it.
Commissioner.
You have said everything.
Yeah, I will wrap it up by saying this. It is so serious. It's not just the impact of health and life. I will be very bold and just tell you that if you talk with some of the local funeral directors, coroners throughout the state, they will tell you what they've experienced over the last twenty-two months. Now, there's a whole different approach to all of that, but let me just tell you, not just those families who were able to afford and had life insurance to bury their loved ones, but the multiple of families who had to do a go-fund meeting, take up a collection because they didn't have life insurance on a loved one. Someone who was not vaccinated and they passed away due to COVID. Well, that doesn't have to happen, and I think it's important that people realize that this is a serious deal, and we need to end it. And you're right, Commissioners, Commissioner, this could go on much longer. And the other thing I do want to say about this, the financial and economic impact that this is certainly having right now and will continue to have in a greater capacity if we don't adhere to this. And I also say that the funding that's coming from the federal government is going to run out. It's going in. They're not going to be able to do that forever. So, for those folks who are in a comfort zone, get out your comfort zone, get vaccinated. We've got tons of places that are hiring, help wanted signs everywhere, and in order to move the economy, the federal government will have to stop doing what they're doing, and people got to go to work. People got to get vaccinated. We've got to move this country forward, and that includes Rockdale County. So, my comment is not for a contest or a demand. So, my comment is not for a contest or a debate. It is what it is. Let's be safe. Let's move forward. Director, are there any need for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
That being said, happy Tuesday. This meeting is adjourned.
Two weeks in a row.